Good evening. As Chairperson of the Hartford Board of Education, I hereby call to order the October fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four regular meeting. I wish to extend a warm welcome to everyone present and our television viewers. The Board Superintendent and I are pleased that you have joined us as we celebrate achievement, review information, and make policy decisions related to the effective operations of Hartford Public Schools. This is a regular meeting, and all items that will be discussed or voted on this evening have been posted as required by state law. As the Hartford Board of Education, we are here to set goals, listen to reports of the superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and make policy for the district. We are not here to make management decisions or solve problems with individuals. Management is the responsibility of the superintendent. The monthly meetings of the Board are open to the public. They are the time when the Board conducts its business of governing the school system in a public arena. The regular meetings are not meetings with the public. Therefore, comments from the audience will be confined to the time designated for the public to address the Board. Decorum and courtesy are important elements in the effective public meetings. Please silence your cellphones or communication devices and refrain from talking while others are speaking. Since it is legally mandated that proceedings be accurately recorded, I may have to ask for order periodically should noise begin to interfere with our recording capabilities. I am pleased you have taken time to join us this evening. We are very proud of the school system and thank you for your interest in Hartford Public Schools. Now this will be read in Spanish.
Primero, si alguien en este auditorio necesita interpretación, por favor levante su mano y la intérprete le ayudará en este momento. Buenas noches, el presidente de la Junta de Educación de Hartford ha llamado a orden a esta reunión ordinaria de la junta del quince de octubre dos mil veinticuatro. Damos una cálida bienvenida a todas las personas y presentes y a nuestros televidentes. La junta y la superintendente se complacen que sean unidos a nosotros para celebrar logros, revisar información, y tomar decisiones relacionadas con el funcionamiento efectivo de las escuelas públicas de Hartford. Esta es una reunión ordinaria y todos los asuntos que serán discutidos o votados en esta tarde han sido notificados como lo requiere la ley estatal. Como Junta de Educación de Hartford, estamos aquí para establecer metas, escuchar los informes de la superintendente, aprobar los presupuestos, contratos, y nombramientos de personal, y establecer normas para el distrito. No estamos aquí para tomar decisiones administrativas o resolver problemas individuales. La administración es la responsabilidad de la superintendente. Las reuniones mensuales de la junta están abiertas al público. Son el momento en que la junta lleva a cabo su tarea de gobernar el sistema escolar en un espacio público. Las reuniones regulares no son reuniones con el público. Por lo tanto, los comentarios de la audiencia se limitarán al tiempo designado para el público dirigirse a la junta. El decoro y la cortesía son elementos importantes en reuniones públicas eficaces. Por favor, silencie sus teléfonos celulares o dispositivos de comunicación y absténganse de hablar mientras otros están hablando. Ya que es mandato legal que los procedimientos sean grabados con precisión, es posible que tengamos que pedir orden periódicamente si el ruido interfiere con nuestras capacidades de grabación. Nos complace que se haya tomado el tiempo esta tarde para unirse a nosotros. Estamos muy orgullosos de este sistema escolar y les damos gracias por su interés en las escuelas públicas de Hartford.
Thank you. We will now move on to public comment. Mr. Mills?
We, as a Board, in collaboration with the superintendent and district leadership, are committed to cultivating a culture of excellence at all levels of Hartford Public Schools. We thank you for taking the time to attend tonight's Board meeting. We appreciate you coming out to learn more about Hartford Public Schools and for sharing your thoughts and concerns. We have established a protocol to track and respond to concerns raised. We want you to know that we take your concerns seriously, and to that end, staff will follow-up within forty-eight hours if follow-up is required via the preferred method of contact the speaker has indicated on the sign-in sheet. We will follow this no-contact method of follow-up for the time being adhering to safety protocols. As a reminder, you have three minutes to speak. At the two-minute mark, the bell will ring, letting you know that you have one minute left. At the second bell, please wrap up your comments. Now this will be read in Spanish.
Nosotros, la Junta de Educación, en colaboración con la superintendente y personal del distrito, estamos comprometidos a cultivar una cultura de excelencia en todos los niveles de las escuelas públicas de Hartford. Les agradecemos se haya tomado el tiempo para asistir a la reunión de la junta esta noche. Les agradecemos su participación y su deseo de aprender más sobre las escuelas públicas de Hartford y también por compartir sus pensamientos y preocupaciones. Nosotros tomamos sus preocupaciones muy seriamente y hemos establecido un protocolo para el seguimiento y respuesta a inquietudes planteadas. El personal hará un seguimiento dentro de las cuarenta y ocho horas si fuera necesario a través del método de contacto preferido que el orador haya indicado en la hoja de registro. Seguiremos este método de seguimiento sin contacto por el momento adhiriéndonos a los protocolos de seguridad. Esa persona investigará su caso y se comunicará con usted dentro de las cuarenta y ocho horas. Les recordamos que tienen tres minutos para hablar. Cuando han pasado dos minutos, el timbre sonará dejándoles saber que le queda un minuto. Al segundo sonido, por favor, termine sus comentarios. Our first speaker is Michael Downs.
My name is Michael Downs, and I live at seventy-four Rosemont Street in Hartford. And I'm here to, as a citizen of Hartford, I'm here to speak to you about the millions of dollars that's spent on these after-school programs and the extracurricular activity programs. And these programs, in spite of all the money that's spent, don't cover all the students. And they don't provide access to the students, especially the elementary inner-city schools where they're most needed. One I'm thinking of mainly is Wish Elementary in my neighborhood, where all of the students are out of district. They're over at the Vine Street School while their school is being, the school in our district, is being rebuilt and renovated. The students have to be either bused, most are bused, to and from school. Some are escorted by parents or other significant others to and from school. None can walk on their own. There used to be that fourth and fifth graders could walk from the old Wish School, and they could walk home because they lived in the neighborhood. But that's not so all the way over at Vine Street. And so many of the parents work, and they depend on these after-school programs for the kids to go, a place for their children to go and continue, you know, do their homework or have some activity that, educational-type activity. And allows the parent time or sends someone over at a reasonable time, like around five-thirty, six o'clock, to pick these students up. But there's not enough money. So some parents are faced with, they have siblings in the school, and one student, one sibling is accepted to a program, the other sibling is not. And some parents even pick the students up early, one, two, three, four, three hours early, and students miss a significant amount of school. And so, you know, this isn't fair to the student. And so, there is a need for money to be sent to many of these inner-city schools, especially Wish, more money for these programs. I noticed that there is a budget transfer on the docket tonight, and I hope that goes through, although it's only about three million dollars, but we need more of that. Some of that money could be spent in some of these programs. Thank you.
My name is Rachel Taylor. I'm a Hartford School alumna and parent leader. I was also a longtime teacher myself and work with Hartford School graduates currently. I'm here to ask the Board to do more to hold the school district to account for the staffing shortages that are hurting our schools and our children. At my children's school, we are missing one out of two special education teachers, three out of five pre-K classroom paras, an in-person speech therapist, two one-on-one paras as required by students' IEPs, and cafeteria staff. The twenty-nine thousand dollar salary offered to para candidates is less than someone could make working at Target and dissuades many strong candidates from accepting the job. The district also took away one of our custodians, leading to an increase in trash accumulation around the school. That's just one school and a relatively privileged one at that. Across the district, there are forty special education teacher spots open, forty. That is hundreds of children with special needs not receiving the education they need, deserve, and are entitled to by law and humanity. There are so few teachers at Hartford High that seniors are being sent home at noon because there are no classes for them. This is a disgraceful situation, which is not being treated with the urgency it requires. I was disappointed by the Board's vote to continue with the current front office for another year. One of the leaders of this district, whose LinkedIn page is full of talk about leveraging data and other corporate catchphrases, literally came to our school to tell teachers that they are not allowed to hand out breakfast to three- and four-year-olds. Stop micromanaging the schools and do the real work. Teachers and staff in Hartford have a harder job than in surrounding districts and are asked to do it for less money and with more demands. There have been many strategic plans and goals over the years that have had little to no impact. Please stop spending money hiring consultants and put all the money and energy into the people who work directly with children. Make recruiting, retaining, training, and supporting teachers and support staff the top priorities in this district. Our kids do not deserve to be short-changed on custodians, social workers, hot breakfasts, speech therapists, specials teachers, paras, advanced classes, or anything else they need to learn and thrive. Here is the thing: Schools are a fundamentally human endeavor. Whatever the equipment, the curriculum, the testing, it is the human interactions between kids and adults, day in and day out, that define the quality of a school. The people inside schools need to be the focus of this district. Please treat this situation with the urgency it requires.
Good evening, members of the Hartford Board of Education. I stand before you tonight not just as a concerned parent, but as a voice for the countless children who are being failed by our system. I'm here to address an imperative issue at Capital Prep. There is a fourth-grade teacher who has been allowed, yes, allowed, to verbally abuse and disrespect students on a daily basis. I find this to be a disgrace to our educational system and a betrayal of the trust we place in our schools. Let me be crystal clear: She curses at children. She shows absolutely no regard for her behavior or its impact. Parents have made complaints, yet her conduct continues unabated. We are now three months into the school year, and her behavior has only grown more brazen. The principal and assistant principal claim that they would investigate and update me on the matter. Unfortunately, I'm still waiting. But I ask you, how long does it take to investigate the verbal abuse of children, towards children? The first time I was informed about this behavior, over a month ago, I informed the principal and received an apology from the teacher. Two weeks later, the teacher cursed at another student in front of the entire class. My son Kendrick Newton said that teachers are not supposed to curse and that he was going to tell me, his mom. According to my son, the teacher then replied, "So what? What is she gonna do? She ain't gonna do nothing." I removed my child from her class after this, but that's not enough. My child has been approached by former classmates desperate to know how they too can be transferred to another class to escape this toxic environment. No child should ever have to strategize their way out of abuse in a place meant for learning and growth. To the Board, I ask you directly, would you accept or excuse profanity being used towards your child? I demand that you look into this matter immediately. Every day that this teacher remains in this classroom is another day that we fail our children. If we allow this behavior to continue, we send a message to our children and students that verbal abuse is acceptable and speaking about any form of abuse is pointless. Members of the Board, I challenge you to take immediate and decisive action. Investigate thoroughly and show our community that you truly stand for well-being, for the well-being of every student in Hartford. Your silence and inaction make you complicit to this abuse. Our children deserve better, our community expects better, and I will not rest until we see real change. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Board of Education members and superintendent. I had no intention to speak this evening, but as I was looking through the agenda, there are a couple of things that caught my eye and I was very concerned. First, on one of the pages under Office of Teaching and Learning Curriculum Updates, there's a statement right in the box of strategies for student success. It says here equitable access to high-quality learning experiences. Now, let me share something with you. I've been a teacher for thirty-four years. This is my thirty-fourth year. I've taught seven different languages across five countries. I know what access to quality learning experiences are. Unfortunately, it's not equitable in Hartford. In the school where I teach, I teach middle-school students as well as elementary-school students. And in my school, still, I get to see my students in middle-school once a week. I've spoken to this in the past, once a week. And at HMTCA, those middle-schoolers get Spanish every single day, and they have a textbook. I don't have a textbook. Can anyone on the school board explain to me how that is equitable? And I'm in my fifth year at my school, which I love. I really love those kids, and I wake up every morning going in to give them the very best that I can, but it's not equitable. The second thing that caught my attention was on a few pages, a few pages later, under Curriculum Implementation, Years One and Two. It says that risas y son risas, for world languages, it's referred to as a curriculum. It's not a curriculum. This is a program, a resource, with a lot of interactive online resources. Why should we refer to it as a curriculum? Now, this was started, or the district purchased this program at the beginning or over the summer, and we were introduced to it at the beginning of the school year. I am thankful that this was bought. Thank you very much. It was time. However, it is chaotic in the sense that I have to manually put in close to four hundred students into the system so that I can use it. I've thus far only been able to put in four classes out of the eighteen classes that I teach. That is not adequate. So please do better. I feel that in Hartford, we often say things just to be able to check a box, and that is not right. The public doesn't know what's happening, and we keep, as a district, hoodwinking them into believing that everything that we say on paper is actually true. We need to do much better. Thank you for listening.
Good evening, members of the Board, Superintendent. My name is Carol Gale. I'm a Hartford resident and president of the Hartford Federation of Teachers. HFT was very pleased to see on your agenda this evening the appointment of a chief financial officer. Thank you very much for that. Fills a vacancy that definitely was causing concern during contract negotiations, so glad to see that that is happening. Also, we'd like to thank Shontay Brody, Jen Hockenhall, and Tyrone Walker, and Superintendent Torres Rodriguez, who attended the September thirtieth Day of Action at HMTCA, highlighting the sunset of ESER funding that benefited our students as well as the continued need for school funding. Thank you also for your quick action on a resolution asking Congress and the state of Connecticut to fund our schools. It is on tonight's agenda. Certainly hope that you vote in favor of that. We certainly encourage that resolution to pass as well as to make sure that it is sent out to all the elected officials that represent Hartford at both the city, the state, and the federal levels. Within the context of needing more funding, HFT is also compelled to want to address a recent news article that highlighted a student, Hartford graduate, a recent graduate, that still is struggling to read and write despite her twelve years of education at Hartford Public Schools, as well as I've also seen articles that the state legislature is already calling for restricting funding and increasing oversight. Neither of these are things that Hartford needs, and I feel that they are missing the message that the student was trying to portray, which is our need for more funding and the ability to provide every student the support that they need. We also do know that teachers advocated for this student all along her journey and requested the special ed and related services and supports that were assessed along the way as needed. Unfortunately, some of these attempts met roadblocks at many levels and left her with this unique story. I know every student has a unique story. This one, however, does serve to illustrate a couple of areas of concern that we have raised before. The first regarding the lowering of expectations in order to increase graduation rates. Hartford Public Schools continues to use a grading policy that gives all students a minimum of fifty, despite whether the student earned it or not, and provides graduation credits for things like advisory and resource rooms and intervention classes where students, like the one that was in the news, need remediation. And that remediation does cost money, money for special curriculums, training, technology, and staff. The second area of concern that this story illustrates is the denial of services due to lack of funds. I can't speak to the specifics of that one student's journey, but I can speak to the repeated scenario that teachers share of making recommendations at PPTs for what students need and that these recommendations are often denied because of a lack of funding. Therefore, Hartford must address these funding needs and not mitigate them by lowering graduation standards or denying recommended services for our students. On a final note, our contract negotiations between the Board and the HFT have one final meeting on October twenty-fourth. It has been disappointing that the superintendent has not yet attended any negotiations to date, so I am here to make a final invitation and request that the superintendent attend this final meeting, as well as, of course, any of the Board are welcome to attend and observe, but we feel that the superintendent's presence may definitely help us achieve some tentative agreements and avoid arbitration. Thank you very much.
John Walton, who as the last speaker is exercising his right to speak twice.
Superintendent, distinguished Board members, I'd first like to apologize to the parent that spoke earlier. There are some bad apples among us, and I apologize for that experience. I hope we get that corrected. To my colleague, Mr. Downs, who has been here, age definitely creates wisdom in many areas. He has always advocated that we restructure our educational structure to include the trades. I was at a community meeting a couple of weeks ago, and there were students there, and they were expressing that the education, the way it's structured right now, is not meeting their needs because it doesn't meet them where they are. And they stressed how restructuring the education system to include the trades is, for some of them, or many of them, a place where they are, to work with their hands, to be in real-world skills and opportunities. So Mr. Downs is right. And that youth program, I want to say to everyone in this room, we are all educators, whether you fall on the academic side or whether you fall on the operational side, but we are all educators. That's the reason why we even have the youth program, because some of the kids who would misbehave in class, you would have to go get a custodian or a food service worker or a security guard or a paraprofessional or someone who is not certified in order to bring some type of order to the child or that direct connection to the student, because many of our memberships, and especially mine, eighty-seven percent live in the city of Hartford, so they are the stakeholders that we're talking about. Our students see them in the grocery store, they see them in the church, they see them in their neighborhoods, so they can relate to them, which then broadens or fills in the gap for them to be able to go into a classroom where someone who may not be from their neighborhood can then teach them and educate them. So that's that youth program. We need to strengthen that, we need to invest in it, we need to correlate it and align it with Mr. Dr. Director Padawaj's program with new visions to get some of our trouble kids into these programs so they have opportunities outside of causing troubles. I'll say this again, if we're going to give millions of dollars to vendors, then these vendors should be required to have job opportunities for our community members and internships for our students. This should be a requirement. Millions of tax dollars going to companies that do not invest in the city of Hartford or its community is a waste of our money. For the legislator and this Board, let me definitely give you kudos because there is some positive things I see coming from this Board, and I see you are paying attention. So that legislative committee, I think we should bring back. Rekindle that because that's part of your avocation, and that's a vehicle we could all use and we could all agree on to be a part of in order to get more funding for the city of Hartford. Now, let me just tell the truth here. Last Board meeting, I heard many of the Board members speak about their decision on whether to keep the superintendent or not to. And let's just be real, we could get all of the Harvard elites, Cornell elites, We could get all of the Harvard elites, Cornell elites, all of the Ivy League elites, and we could sit them in Dr. Torres' shoes, and they wouldn't make a difference. Let's just be real. Because there are some things, like the Chef versus O'Neill decision, that has, although well-intended, needs to be modified in order to answer or speak to the issues we have currently. So it's not about changing the actual person. Some people agree that she should leave. Some people agree that she should stay. What I'm saying is, no matter who you sit in that seat, if we don't be real, nothing will change. Now, those are some of the positive things I wanted to mention, but we have to get to some of the negative things. And some of those negative things are management structure. Let me explain how it works in operations. You have a chief here, executive director, director, an assistant director, manager, supervisor, supervisor, and the list goes on and on. Lot of chiefs and no Indians. So the students that need the support and the actual work that needs to be done is, there's plenty of oversight, but no actual direct work. And I feel this has caused part of the problem with spending and everything in our district. Right? Because we have a model where we go out and we get all of these elites with these big titles and these grandiose educational backgrounds. Well, what have they changed? Did they stop a deficit? Were they able to increase test scores? Were they able to show us anything? To be honest with you, all I saw was collective data. We need to restructure that and say, all right, let's stop spending so much money in the top administration. And let's start spending money and pulling in those gaps to the people who are directly working with students and directly doing the jobs. And if we have to say, hey, well, we can't have so many administrators, and we can't have them at that cost. Now, you know, my aunt who owns businesses always said, a person should be paid what they're worth. So I never tell people not to ask for what they're worth. But our students deserve more than they're getting. And our community deserves, because our taxpayers are paying, what, upwards of $150,000 in administrative costs so that someone can identify a problem we already know? And then, I have a great relationship with many of your administrators, superintendent. Great relationship with many of them. So some people will be offended, but they won't, they will be offended by things I say that affect them because they know they haven't been doing their jobs properly. And that is, they are causing you more problems in the district and cause more problems than they're actually fixing. We should restructure, take that money, shift it to the people who directly do the work so that we can keep the people in our system that want to be here, that will invest outside of just getting a paycheck from Hartford. How many people would stay teaching, administrating, or doing anything in Hartford if they weren't receiving the type of money they were getting? How many can say that? How many would take a kid home or mentor a kid? How many would actually do that? And that's the true litmus test to how we spend our money, who's invested in Hartford or not, and who's willing to make the real sacrifices and tell the truth. I'll just say this real quick. I know I wasted my time. I celebrated a birthday yesterday. So one of the advantages of getting older is you can speak your truth because you don't have a fear of what the retaliation may be. Because one thing for sure, and I suffered this, superintendent, you did your best to fix it, I suffered someone trying to get rid of me, write me up, target me, and do all of the things because I was speaking truth to power. But the one thing they cannot change is my residency. So whether you have me here as a union president or not, I will still be a warrior for these students. I thank you for your time, and I appreciate it.
And that concludes public comment.
Thank you all. I will now move on to the report of the chair. And I will apologize ahead of time, it's a long one. We've done a lot this month. I will start with the Blue Ribbon Commission on Education update. The Blue Ribbon Commission on Education continues to hold meetings which are livestreamed to the public. Earlier this month, co-chairs from the Blue Ribbon Commission, Ms. Andrea Comer and Dr. Catherine Carbone, along with Nick Stelletano, a consultant from Dillinger, joined the Board of Education's Policy Committee meeting to share information about the commission, as well as to answer questions from the board members. Then, on October 8th, Dr. Torres Rodriguez joined the Blue Ribbon Commission meeting to share important information on funding needs. Both meetings were incredibly informative. I would highly recommend watching both meetings if you are interested in learning more. The next Blue Ribbon Commission meeting will be tomorrow, Wednesday, October 16th. Prior meeting materials and recordings, as well as upcoming meeting dates and agendas, can be found at hartfordblueribbon.org. As a reminder, the goal of the commission is to provide recommendations from the areas of focus to the district and other partners by December 2024 in alignment with the upcoming legislative session. I encourage those who are interested in learning more to visit the website. And also, tomorrow's meeting will be digging into data from the climate and culture surveys that were done. Next, onto school visits. In the recent weeks, I had the pleasure of visiting Hartford Public High School and Noah Webster with Board Member Mills, and HMTC with Board Member Tatum and Board Member Mills. We had a chance to learn more about the challenges and opportunities in the schools we visited by talking with principals, teachers, and paraprofessionals while seeing the school days in action. We are grateful for the time spent with each person during our visits as we are eager to learn and see firsthand how the decisions the board makes impacts the students and those who support the students day in and day out. My next visit will be to Sand School and then to Weaver High School with Board Member Fortune. And if we haven't made it to your school yet, not to worry. My personal goal is to make it to every school before the end of the school year, which I realize is a lofty goal. But we do look forward to learning more with each and every visit. And again, thanks to the principals for opening their schools for us. Also, board leadership had a chance to virtually meet Ms. Kaitlin Richard, who is on the agenda tonight for appointment as our new CFO. We appreciated her enthusiasm and passion around the budget process and school finances. We will be scheduling additional meetings in order to ensure all board members have a chance to meet her in the coming weeks. Next is an update on the strategic planning process. So on September 18th, superintendent, in collaboration with the Board of Education, launched Hartford Strategic Planning Process to guide the district over the next decade. This initiative aims to ensure that every student graduates prepared to thrive in a rapidly changing world. The process will result in a 10-year vision statement and a three-year strategic plan grounded in equity, innovation, and meaningful community engagement. Since the launch, the survey is now live and available on the HPS website with community outreach conducted via social media, Parents Square, and Direct Communications. I will also caveat that the survey can be completed by anyone, not just parents or students, community members, principals, teachers, anyone. So please, I would highly encourage you to find that survey and take it if you haven't already. On September 28th, in partnership with Hartford Parent University, we engaged 25 families and focus groups during the first of three learning sessions. Across the district, teachers participated in a rolling 20-minute focus groups during their PD day on October 9th, and we have also engaged our union partners as part of this process. Upcoming community engagement efforts around the strategic plan include school-based interviews and focus groups between October 4th and October 30th. Through October 30th, we will be conducting interviews and focus groups in schools to gather feedback from staff, students, and families, which will help shape our strategic plan and long-term vision. There will be school showcase visits. These showcase events offer a chance to highlight the work in our schools while engaging with families, community partners, industry leaders, and funders. The first showcase will be held at McDonough Middle School on October 16th, with two more planned in the coming weeks. We'll also have partner interviews and focus groups between October 7th and November 15th. We'll be conducting interviews and focus groups with community partners to gather insights from organizations, local businesses, and other stakeholders. These efforts underscore our commitment to co-creating a roadmap for future Hartford, the future of Hartford Public Schools, ensuring that every voice in our community is heard and valued. We encourage continued participation. Please visit our website at hartfordpublicschools.org/allvoicesourfuture for more information. And lastly, I wanted to express my appreciation, and I think I speak for the board here when I say to all of you that come out to speak at our meetings, everyone who watches the workshops and committee meetings, and those who continue to engage with the board and the district. As a new board member and chair, I appreciate the passion you have for our students, and I am grateful for you taking the time to share your thoughts and concerns with us. We are listening and learning and look forward to the continued dialogue. As a reminder, you can find the superintendent's report, full committee reports, student reports, and all attachments and videos in the meeting agendas on Board Docs. This month, we discussed all contracts that are up for vote tonight at each relevant committee, as well as a curriculum update at the Teaching and Learning Committee, a presentation from co-chairs of the Blue Ribbon Commission at the Policy Committee, a presentation on the results of a United Way-led Hartford Youth Voices Count survey, and an overview of the Office of Strategic Partnership and Fund Development at the Family and Community Engagement Committee. At the Finance Committee, we reviewed the preliminary 2023-2024 financial results, the latest on the COVID-19 relief grant spending, the monthly budget report, the monthly budget to actual report through August 2024, and an update on the Connecticut State Department of Education inquiry and a five-year forecast on the budget. Lastly, at this month's workshop meeting, we had a productive conversation on the state of talent management in the district that included recruitment and retention strategies. All committee and workshop meetings are livestreamed as well as viewable after the meeting. The YouTube links are saved in each meeting's agenda on Board Docs. I highly encourage the community to view the meetings and read the reports where possible. If you have any questions or feedback, please contact Christina Santiago, our board liaison, at csantiago@hartfordschools.org. All right, with that, we will move on to the report of the superintendent. Superintendent?
Thank you. And I don't know that I can promise that I'm shorter than yours, but good evening, everyone. I do have several reports, and as the chair referenced, please access the full report on Board Docs. Yes, we did have a workshop that we did a deeper dive into the state of talent, and I encourage everyone to dive into that report and that presentation. I did want to lift our Lead Connectors Program, which we're excited to launch again this year. It's designed to support our newest colleagues across our schools. This is an initiative that is, aims to provide mentorship, guidance, and hands-on support to our new staff members as they transition into their roles. So each new colleague is paired with an experienced educator who offers personalized assistance to ensure that there's a smoother onboarding experience and to begin to foster a sense of community. The Lead Connector coordinates this community at each school site and convenes throughout the year to discuss either best practices and strategies to support, among other school leads. And this group of Lead Connectors is comprised of experienced mentors and teacher leaders who see this as an important approach to supporting our new colleagues. The Lead Connectors, the LCs, will continue to play a viral role in helping us, our team members navigate our system, access resources, and feel a little more confident in their practice from day one. We are glad that we're able to offer the stipend to our Lead Connectors, $1,500 stipend, and we are committed to fostering relationships and providing a little bit more of a targeted approach and support, positioning our new colleagues for success. This program is a key part of our commitment to improving our professional growth and collaboration, and it's a value that we place on our community and shared leadership across the district. We continue brainstorming ways and discussing ways to attract talent. We know that we are in active negotiations with various units, and we've had many conversations outside of those, outside of the conversations with the unions. Many of us have had conversations about the fact that our salary scale is not comparable to other communities, and so that is something that we are mindful and hope to be addressing. You know, relative to paraeducators, there have been conversations that we've had with our paraeducator lead, Shelley Davis, around just strategies to remove some of the barriers to entry to employment for paraeducators. We hear regularly, yes, we hear about the pay. We also hear that there are barriers relative to the paraeducator assessment, the para-pro. While I know that that is a state-level requirement, we can't do away with that requirement. We are looking at ways that we can potentially support candidates, such as, for example, vouchers, because there is a cost implication for these assessments, and training sessions for supporting as they go take the assessment. And so we are thinking of those strategies, and I appreciate those of you that are on the board that have also shared not only ideas, but also have suggested people that you might know in the community that might be also willing to extend their time to support incoming paraeducators. And then lastly, relative to talent, we do have 40 student teachers currently across our system, and we're working also on strategies to keep them and bring them on board as soon as possible. And so ideally before they graduate. So more to come on that. Maybe as you visit schools, you get to meet some of our student teachers. Shifting over to a reminder to many across our community to please look at our advisory committees that have launched, right, as part of efforts to continue to expand community and have opportunities for staff, families, and partners to inform the thinking, inform the work. Our Teacher Educator Advisory Committee, which is a platform for educators and staff to share perspectives, offer feedback, and engage in meaningful dialogue. Our Parent Caregiver Engagement Panel, which is for parents and caregivers dedicated to increasing parent and caregiver engagement and partnership. We want to amplify as many voices as possible. Our Special Education Advisory Committee, this is a continuation to the committee. It provides an open forum for special education teachers, adult support staff, and other related services team members to engage with the district leadership team. Senior Leader Advisory Committee seeks to leverage the collective expertise of our school leaders to support informed decision-making, and many, the rollout, design, and implementation of many are initiatives. Our Partnership Collaborative Panel, which is district personnel to strengthen relationships between our system and our community partners. And this is really trying to have a platform for two-way communication around not only updates, processes, progress monitoring of some outcomes, and co-creating some initiatives as we kind of progress through the year. So I want to encourage everyone to please fill out the survey and your interest in participating. And some of these structures have been in place, right? We've had feedback sessions, for example, for our world language teachers on the selection of our new elementary curriculum and support resources. Our Lead Connectors that I just referenced, surveys, our Literacy Council that was so instrumental in the adoption of, that led to the adoption of our K-5 English Language Arts curriculum, and other structures. And so we're hopeful that our community members internally and externally take advantage of these opportunities. I know that Chairperson Hockenhall referenced the state inquiry and an update that was provided at our Finance Committee, and so I just wanted to do a quick voiceover here. And there is a slide deck with a few slides, and so for those of you at home, you can access that whenever you have time. But I, there are three areas of inquiry, financial and grants management, looking at how is it that we're spending down the state and federal funds, and where are, there might be opportunities for financial process improvements, a look at magnet funding and how we're allocating and using the magnet grants. Specifically, are there, is that happening in alignment to the goals of CHEF and in compliance with specific statutory requirements? And the last area, mostly a request that I've made, was relative to special education, funding, and programming. And the questions there are focused on what supports and services are available to students? to special education students in Hartford Public Schools, and how are we using available dollars to ensure that students receive necessary services with a specific eye toward funding that goes out for out-of-district placements and the programs that we have internally for students that need a higher level of need. And so you have the next slide, which shows the details of the inquiries. But I wanted to provide an update because the State Department of Education received their update. And so some of the positive practices that were shared with the State Department of Education include a Friday Focus, which is a communication tool that we use from Central Office to our schools. While that was identified as a plus, as a positive practice, it was also lifted that the information might not always cascade to staff across school, right? That school leaders might receive the information, and there might be either a delay or that the information doesn't go across. Another plus was a high-functioning Medicaid reimbursement process, our reporting IDEA expenditures, right? IDEA, federal requirements relative to the Individuals with Disabilities in Education Act, which is where special education funding, the umbrella for special education and related supports is. Clean and safe facilities observed during their site visits. The support that we provide to our executive assistants for financial management, also with an "and" that there needs to be additional training, especially because we onboard new AEs on a regular basis. And then the robust partnerships with our community-based organizations was something else that they identified as a plus. When, in terms of the areas that Public Works, which is the firm that is looking into that area around financial and grants management, there were some opportunities for improvement. And so in the slide that is included in the report, you'll see the areas of opportunities for improvement. And what we've added there is the work that is underway to address those areas that have been identified already, and all of those identified to be completed by December. So one is revisiting the current staffing model, especially as it relates to grants and the fact that we've had reductions at Central Office, and a strong recommendation around having someone strictly dedicated to grants management. And so we're in the process of hiring a grants manager. Of course, you heard, we are hopeful to be getting approval for our Chief Financial Officer tonight. An opportunity for improvement in grants management processes, including planning, monitoring, drawdowns, and ownership. And so to that, we're identifying owners for every single grant, regardless of how big or small, developing an annual grants calendar with very key deadlines, and then identifying flow charts and processes and the implications for those at the school level. Documenting processes to better utilize digital tools. Some of you might be aware of the MUNIS is the system, the financial system that we use with the city. And so leveraging some of the tools that MUNIS has. Regular training for managers and administrative support staff on financial processes and systems. And we are now in the process of a quarterly finance training calendar. And two additional improvement areas. One is processes for monitoring spending, purchasing, and asset management, and that is a calendar and cadence for reporting on our assets. And lastly, collaboration improvements between the Offices of Finance, Talent, and Labor. And so we are reviewing structures for collaboration, though, as you remember, we did do a reorganization at Central Office, and so there were already areas that we identified early on for improvement. I know that was a lot, but I just wanted to summarize what the information that had been shared and where we are relative to the improvements. Two more updates. One is I do want to also reference the article in the media relative to a special education student's experience. And I do want to say, and this is what I also shared with our school leaders, that we are deeply committed, deeply committed to making sure that each and every one of our students receives everything that they are in need of, especially our most vulnerable students. And we are aware of the allegations by the student and their experience. And while I cannot speak to and discuss the specifics due to privacy considerations, I want to be very clear that we are deeply concerned. And not only concerned, but we're also empathetic to the student's experience. And so I just wanted to pause and say that. And we are looking into the entire chronology and the responses across the years. And if there are processes, protocols, services, professional learning that are identified for improvement, we will make sure that we do that swiftly. If there are gaps in how students are being supported, we will address that. We have an expectation here, not only relative to how we serve students, but with anything, with anything that we do academically, operationally, we have an expectation that if anyone sees something of concern, you say something. That goes across everything that we do at all levels of the organization. And accountability and advocacy, those two things are not an exception in our district. They're not an exception, and I also believe there are shared accountability. And so while we'll provide the professional learning necessary to our staff, if there were gaps and failures, we will address those as well. Again, our commitment remains to making sure that each and every one of our students has equitable access. And all of our students, particularly our students that are in need of special education supports, multilingual supports, know that I remain committed, and I know that we have had conversations as a board relative to some of the barriers. And I've had conversations with my team as well and our school leaders. And so I just wanted to, it's not in my report, but I wanted to voice that tonight. And lastly, today also culminates Hispanic Heritage Month, and we did not reference that last month, but I just wanted to also acknowledge the contributions of Hispanics locally and throughout the country and beyond. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Superintendent. We will now move on to the business agenda.
Excuse me, point of information. We had talked about moving the consent agenda for the business agenda, so just for your consideration.
Thank you, Tyrone, or sorry, Board Member Walker. Yes, we did talk about moving the consent agenda up, as it is in our bylaws currently. We can't move it until we address our bylaws, so we appreciate the question, but that is why it is still where it is. Thank you. All right, the business agenda, item 4.1, Administrative Appointment, Chief Financial Officer. Motion is that the Hartford Board of Education approve the superintendent's recommendation to appoint Ms. Kaitlin Richard to the position of Chief Financial Officer. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved and seconded. I will pass it over to Superintendent.
Thank you. I do have a, well, you have in your packet the information, the resume. I will say that a little bio, Kaitlin Richard, and I don't know if we are on, we are not on, we're on, who we've had the pleasure to meet in person a few weeks ago as she traveled from Tulsa Public Schools for the interview process. She is currently the Director of Budget at Tulsa Public Schools in Oklahoma. She oversees a budget of approximately $700 million and ensures the district makes strategic investments to serve. They have about 33,000 students across 77 schools. Previously, she was the Director of District Strategy and Implementation, where she managed a team to support school-level leaders in making decisions that were grounded not only in the data, but also in the student needs. And prior to working at Tulsa Public Schools, Kaitlin supported large urban districts across the country with equitable resource use. She has a bachelor's in economics with honors from Brown University, a master of management studies in public education from Yale School of Management, and is currently pursuing her Doctorate of Education at UPenn Graduate School of Education. I know that board leadership had an opportunity to meet Ms. Richard, and one of the things that stood out for me relative to a suggestion from a board member, I don't know if it was Mr. Mills or Mr. Walker, relative to a network of support of some sort for Kaitlin. And I did want to respond that there, you know, Hartford Public Schools were a part of the Aspen Institute's Urban Superintendents Network, and that is a network that has, convenes superintendents and district-level leaders that are struggling with similar challenges serving high-need urban communities. And so there is a carve-out for CFOs. And so just wanted to respond officially that that is something that our CFO, if appointed, would have access to.
Thank you.
I was corrected. It was our chairperson that made the suggestion, so yes.
With that, are there any questions? And there's Kaitlin there. I see her on the screen. Hi, Kaitlin. Should I turn it over to Kaitlin? Or questions? Okay. Kaitlin, since you have been already introduced by the superintendent, I will open it up to my board colleagues to see if anyone has any questions or any discussion.
Thank you. I'm not quite sure where to look, but you're on my screen up here. Yeah, thank you for taking the time to speak with us and answer our questions. My question is general. Having not had the opportunity to meet you, and since this is probably the first time that anyone from the public in Hartford has a chance to see you, I'm curious to hear what excites you most about this opportunity to come be the Chief Financial Officer in Hartford Public Schools?
Yes, and good evening, members of the board and superintendent. Thanks so much for having me here. So what really excites me about this opportunity is that I'm excited in general about strategic resourcing. And so some of that came up in my bio, but I've done a lot of work, starting back in college, around understanding how we can dedicate resources to students who need it the most in ways that are going to help them grow the most. So I did work across the country, working with large urban districts to support them around making those strategic resource use decisions. I worked a lot with Tulsa Public Schools at the time and got to know their community very well, supported them around deficit reduction in ways that was furthest away from the classroom, and supporting a lot of their principals and teacher leaders in school communities about making budget decisions that supported the needs of their school. I ended up moving to Tulsa because I was so passionate about the work and I wanted to see it through. So I've been here for about four years, working with this community around the budget, making long-term decisions, engaging the community, fiscal transparency. And so I've been excited about my next opportunity in terms of being a CFO, and I got really excited about the Hartford community in particular, especially after speaking with the superintendent. Very aligned vision in terms of thinking about resources as something that can support students directly, and thinking about the types of decisions and trade-offs and priorities we need to make to make that a reality, again, especially for our highest-need students. So as I learned more about the Hartford community and I got a chance to visit, I did my interview, but I also spent some time in the city just familiarizing myself. I got really excited. Just, I know there's a lot of challenges, but I definitely view those as opportunities to understand, learn more about the community, and really figure out what are the most important things to resource to support the students of Hartford. So yeah, that's what excites me. I was really aligned with the vision, and I think some of my experience doing this type of work was a good fit for some of the challenges and opportunities in Hartford.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Mills?
I think I have more, not a question, but more of a comment before we vote, if that's okay. I think I just sort of want to make a point, especially to the public, something that she mentioned that I found to be particularly important is, and she repeated it again a moment ago, was the work that she did in managing deficits farthest away from the classroom. And I think, given the Hartford Public School System's predicament, lack of state funding and all of the mandated things that we have to do, I think that in itself is just incredibly important. So I really wanted to flag that as a reason that I, you know, plan on voting yes and hiring her or approving her. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? No? All right. Yeah, go for it.
Ms. Richard, you also spoke about the work that Tulsa Public Schools had to do, but particularly that you led in response to a state-level inquiry as well. Can you speak just a little bit about that and specifically how the response also had to include shifts relative to school leader-level support and practice?
So in Tulsa, for the past two years, we've been undergoing a state-level inquiry into our finances. We welcomed it because it gave us an opportunity to have an objective lens on some process improvements we needed to make, and updated a lot of our processes, updated some of the guidance. But one of the biggest learnings was actually just helping our stakeholders and our community understand the financial processes and be able to execute them really well. So a lot of work that we did was actually around redesigning our principal support and our principal secretary's support to understand those processes for procurement and accounting and everything they need to know to do their job effectively. So actually, we just did a two-hour session today with all of our principal secretaries, addressing topics they had asked us deeper questions about that really is meant to support them in their role and make it as smooth as possible and meet all of the compliance that we know we need to meet. We recognize that finance is not what everyone is thinking about all the time, every day. So a lot of the work was designing training that made it as easy as possible for them to follow our processes so that we could be in compliance.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, Kaitlin. We appreciate your time, and it was good to see you again. All right, so the motion on the floor is that the Hartford Board of Education approve the superintendent's recommendation to appoint Ms. Kaitlin Richard to the position of Chief Financial Officer. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nays? Abstentions? The ayes have it. The motion moves.
Two abstentions.
Oh, sorry. There were two abstentions. The ayes have it. The motion moves. All right, item 4.2, Contract Continuation Approval, Ready CT. Motion that the Hartford Board of Education authorize the superintendent to execute a contract with Ready CT for the term outlined in the contract ending June 30th, 2025, in an amount not to exceed $82,000. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
Seconded.
Thank you. Dr. Torres Rodriguez, I turn it to you.
Yes, and I see our team members are lined up already, so I will just do the background. Ready CT, you've been, Ready CT has been before us, right? They're an affiliate of the Connecticut Business and Industry Association, CBIA, focusing on advancing academic excellence and career-connected learning. They have been an integral partner to Hartford Public Schools in so many different ways, from our career pathways, work-based learning opportunities. And they are looking to support our school here, our Great Path Academy. And team, are you ready for, in case there are any questions? Again, the program is driven by efforts of the Ready CT Work-Based Learning Coordinator, and so helping to promote the learning and... and so hoping, helping to promote the learning and earning, so learning and earning opportunities afforded by career themed instruction by engaging students in dynamic ways. We heard earlier, right, one of our speakers say that our students continue to ask for these type of learning opportunities. And so this is an opportunity for us to make our portrait of a graduate come alive. And so the coordinator will prioritize the design and the delivery of a work readiness curriculum, and also the implementation of the work-based learning continuum of experiences that include paid internship recruitment, right, students and employers, preparation, placement, and then the ongoing monitoring of up to 80 Great Path Academy students per year, with a focus on our juniors. So I'll pause there, because I know that we have team members here available in case you have any questions. But the last thing I will say is that the funding source, $82,000 special funding, inter-district magnet school academic and social support extracurricular grant.
Thank you Superintendent. Any questions or discussion from my fellow board members? Mr. Walker?
Thank you. Hi, good evening. I'm asking a question about program impact and student success because this is a continuation contract. Do you have data or stories to share about the student impact, how the internships and the program helped them develop career skills, and just a wide range of their career industry knowledge and skill?
Do you want to take this?
Sure.
Hi, good evening. Jessica Fitzgerald, Principal at Great Path Academy. Thank you for your question. We've outlined when we presented at the Teaching and Learning Committee, and I know there's a slide package that has all the data points that we shared. In the past year and a half since we've implemented Ready CT, we've sent about 65 students on paid internships. Fifty percent of that group of students were Hartford residents. And in addition, we've been able to move a lot of other metrics that we've had at Great Path. Last year, we had a 94.4% graduation, four-year graduation cohort rate from our class of 2023. We were able to decrease our chronic attendance just by about 9% from 2022 to 2023. And there's been additional measures that we've had for our student's success in areas such as, you know, academics, climate, things such as that. But we've really been able to engage our school community in this additional partnership to help provide them this, what I call kind of the trifecta of opportunities. Because we're on the campus of CT State Manchester, we have between 50 and 70 students every semester taking dual enrollment courses with the college, and we've been able to accelerate their experience with this added piece with work-based learning and career preparation programs. And I think since we've done it, we've had great results, and we've had some strong data to show how it's helped improve our school.
Thank you.
Other questions? Ms. Brody?
Do we have Ready CT here this evening?
Yes, we do.
Okay. I would like them to, someone from Ready CT, to just speak to the service.
To the work that we do in the schools?
Yes.
So each of our pathways has a career, a dedicated career pathway program manager. That person works in the school closely with the principals, the assistant principals, the teaching staff, to recruit students and engage them in career pathway work, which is our continuum of work-based learning. So students may participate in field trips, they may participate with guest speakers, resume workshops, career connected lessons. We have a series of 10 workshops that our students complete when they participate with us, prior to going out on paid internships. And then we work with, all of our pathways also have industry boards, industry advisory boards in our schools. So we work with employers to develop paid internships, or to work with students on developing third-party certifications, if there's an industry certification that might help them become employed.
Thank you, and I just wanted to commend the principal, because every time we have a presentation from her school, she knows data, she's able to speak to it, she's able to speak to specific students and their experiences, so I just wanted to say that publicly.
Thank you. Any other questions? Yeah, Ms. Derasa Ledger?
Thank you so much. My question is, do you have any type of program where you follow the student? And also, if students aren't attending college, are there job offers, things like that?
Is that specific to Great Path or Ready CT?
Both.
So Ready CT, we use anecdotal information to track students after they graduate from high school, but we also have a program called Student 5.0, which tracks students beginning their senior year if they don't have a solid plan. Maybe they're a senior, they're not really sure what they want to do, they're not sure if they want to go to college, or if they want to find an apprenticeship, or another post-secondary option, or go right into the workforce. So we do have a team of people that work in different schools. I don't think we have a Student 5.0 at Great Path at this time, but we have them in almost every other comprehensive school in Hartford, comprehensive high school. And they work with the students with supportive services, maybe clothing for interviews, helping them with their driver's license, and then they help them create a plan and connect them to employers, start an internship with the expectation that the employer, once the internship is done, will hire the student to stay with them. There was a second part to that question, I think. What was the second part?
In relation to Great Path.
So Great Path, I think I would give that to you. Sure.
Yeah. The program has been about a year and a half, so with the students that we've had that have gone through internships and gone through the curriculum, we've just had a recent group who graduated, so our class of 2024, that was our students who just had paid internships. So we're working now, you know, on tracking them. One of them who comes to mind was our valedictorian. She went on to Miami University in Ohio, and she had an awesome paid internship with both GRIT, and then a few other things that she had going on for her. But she was one of our excellent success stories. Hartford resident, attained about 32 college credits at CT State Manchester. And those are the students that we, again, intend to follow, so we're hoping to implement that. We have a really strong alumni database at Great Path. I mean, the school has been in existence now with Hartford Schools over 12 years, of course, back to Dr. Torres Rodriguez when she was principal there when it was crack. So there's a lot of alumni connection. Like my PTO president was a former student at Great Path herself and graduate of Great Path. So there's a lot of exciting things in terms of mobilizing that base and coming up with better systems to be able to track that type of data, which is, of course, what we love to ultimately do.
Mr. Walker? Oh, sorry.
This is for Ready CT. I was going to ask if what you're offering, whether it's open to other Hartford Public School students, or whether you operate in other Hartford Public School venues?
So we have a team of people in Hartford Public High School, in Weaver, and at Buckley High School. And we cover different pathways. So Hartford Public High School has engineering and green technology, and Allied Health. Those are sponsored by RTX, Private Philanthropy, and Hartford Healthcare. And then we have a team of people that are at Buckley High School. They cover public service, which includes education, law, government, and public safety. And then we have a computer science, we're changing the name and expanding it, but we're in the process of looking at that now to try to figure out how to engage even more students in programming there. And then we have insurance and financial services, sponsored by Travelers at Weaver, and we're currently reworking the journalism and media program there to also be more engaging. Oh, and then we have Pathways. Oh my gosh, so embarrassed. We have Pathways Academy, and we have a staff member there who is also sponsored by Travelers and works with the entire school at Pathways Academy. Thank you. You're welcome.
I just wanted to say that I did have the opportunity to view and walk through the Allied Health program at Hartford High, and it was very impressive, and it's pretty amazing. And I will also shout out the Little Owls childcare program that's at Hartford High that allowed parents, students, of course, to be able to take advantage of continuing their education while their children were in a safe space. So I wanted to shout that out.
Any other questions, discussion? Nope, all right. Seeing none, the motion on the floor is that the Hartford Board of Education authorize the superintendent to execute a contract with Ready CT for the term outlined in the contract, ending June 30th, 2025, in an amount not to exceed $82,000. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Nays? Abstentions? The ayes have it. The motion moves. Thank you, Ready CT staff and Great Path Academy, we appreciate it. Onto item 4.3, Contract Continuation Approval for the Language Line. The motion is that the Hartford Board of Education authorize the superintendent to execute a contract with Language Line for the term outlined in the contract, ending June 30th, 2025, at an amount not to exceed $105,000. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. I will pass it over to Dr. Torres Rodriguez.
Thank you, and I know that Ms. Janelle Hooker is available for questions. So $105,000 from our general fund line. We have been partnering with Language Line Services since 2011 for phone interpretation services. As we all know, we continue to remain committed to making sure that our parents and caregivers are able to meaningfully participate and engage in their child's education. No one should have to rely on a family member, friends, or even children to communicate in school. I myself personally know what that is, to have to translate as a child for parents and caregivers. And so we want to make sure that as we have the Language Line, that it helps our multilingual families communicate effectively. And in being fiscally responsible this year, we actually, our team took time to look at a total of four translation services organizations to see if there were cost efficiencies, Interpreters and Translation Inc., Bay State Integrate Language Services, and Language Line. So we've learned that there would not only be a slight increase in the amount of the services in going with any of the other organizations, we also realized that it would increase the cost of changing the infrastructure that we already have in place, the equipment, the software, training of staff, which will delay the implementation of the services, as well as, right, impact our ability to be responsive to our families. And so Language Line has been identified, and they provide the support for parents, caregivers during parent-teacher conferences, planning and placement team meetings, in-person meetings, and in other, in other ways. They provide over-the-phone interpreting in over 240 languages. Their services are available 24 hours, seven days a week, and school personnel do not have to schedule the calls. They can call the line directly at any time, and someone will be available. Just to give you some data points, last school year, 75% of the calls were for Spanish language translation, with 17% for Portuguese language. And so I'll, I think at one point, there was a question as to whether or not the information is recorded. There is no information that is recorded in any of these meetings, and so I just wanted to voice that over, because I know it's a regular question that we get from community. I'll pause there and see if anyone has any questions for Ms. Janelle Hooker.
Thank you Superintendent. Any questions from my fellow board members? Board Member Walker?
Thank you. So one, first comment, I appreciate that comparison was done, and so we have some analysis that says this is really a great value. The question is, not about the success of the program, but about its outreach. Do you have an idea whether other immigrant parents, like those who speak Corin, or Swahili, or other language groups, are equally aware of the program and leverage to use the program?
Good evening, board members, and I do have Mr. Matthews with me. He's online. He had surgery, so we give him grace for him to join us virtually, provide any support for answers to your questions. But from our perspective, in terms of our district, we do have over 80 languages that are spoken at our district. We actually have 83. And in the report and information that I did look up, we do have usage of other languages as the ones that you mentioned. We do have a higher volume of Spanish and Portuguese. However, our families that are from different backgrounds are also available, are able to use the service, once they get to the school, to be able to kind of access information in their native language. And we do have reports to give us information around the usage in the different languages. It's smaller amount than Spanish and Portuguese, but it is, because it has over 240 languages, we are able to offer the service to the different variation of families that we have as a district. And I don't know if Mr. Matthews would want to add anything to what I just shared.
The only thing I would add is that we do supply free materials to the schools that advertise the service. So if anybody were to walk into one of the schools, they would have, be greeted with something that said, you know, "Language service is available, please point to your language, and interpreter will be provided to you at no cost." So that's in about 25 of your top languages. There's also another version that has about 100 languages on it that says the same thing.
And I was just looking for my notes to see if I had, like, the different languages that we have had access, or families have accessed the service. And yes, we do have Swahili, we have Corin, we have Portuguese, Portuguese, Brazilian, Haitian, Turkish, Arabic, Bermudez, Mandarin, Tamil are the ones that I was able to pull up.
Great, thank you. I can have just one quick comment as we end. That's really a good news story, and I'd only suggest that, are we able to put this on like Parents' Square or Classroom Dojo on the website so people can be aware that it's available? It is one of the, it's one that parents have demanded in prior meetings where they've come to talk to us, so this is a good news story we can share with them. That's my only comment.
Thank you for that idea. We will look into it.
Thank you. Other questions? Ms. Derasa Ledger?
Thank you. And my question is, and thank you for the presentation with regards to answering the questions, but one question that I have is, there is an opportunity, should you need translation services in person from Language Line, they will provide that. I know it may be a higher cost, but that is available, correct?
That is correct. So as part of the service that they offer, we would also have access to an in-person. It would have a higher cost than what we do on the phone, but that is also an option, as well as video. Sorry.
Okay, thank you. And one more question, if I may. Thank you. So with regards to Haitian Creole, I do know that in the past, it has been, there has been a longer wait time with regards to someone responding. What is the wait time now?
So I'm going to take the answer, but I know Mr. Matthews also have that information. They have had a shift in the increase of Haitian Creole as part of the population that we're accessing or getting the service. So there is a shift in the amount of time that it takes for them to access the service, and I would like for Mr. Matthews to at least say where we are at this point.
Sure. Right now, we're at about 30 seconds, compared to, on average, about 20 seconds for the other languages. And that is due to the large increase. In fact, over the last couple of years, we've had about a 300% increase in Haitian Creole. Before Haitian Creole was predominantly in South Florida, now it's a top 10 language in most of the states. And that's because of the situation in Haiti, and we're going to continue to see more refugees, and we are continuing to hire more qualified interpreters for that language. So again, right now, we're about 30 seconds, and every week, we're bringing on more interpreters. We want to get it down to about 10 to 15 seconds.
Thank you, and I just wanted to say, I'm glad to hear- Thank you, and I just wanted to say I, I'm glad to hear that, and also to learn that Language Line is one of the top places that individuals want to work. So that brings me some joy.
Thank you.
I do have one quick question. And you mentioned an increase in rates for in-person translations. I just want to make sure that increase in fees is for the district, not for families, correct?
For the district.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, discussion?
This is for another day, for another conversation, but I, you know, thinking of the fact that we have 57% of our students, for example, speak Spanish, and we have many other students that speak their native language, looking forward to engaging in conversation with Language Line as to a potential career pathway for some of our students as they near graduating and beyond, so that we can leverage their assets, their language.
That's a good idea, thank you.
Can I say something on that? So I love to hear that. As far as our interpreters go, we only hire native-born speakers. So if they are native-born, definitely, definitely send them our way. If they're not, still send them our way. We have many job opportunities outside of being an interpreter.
Alright, last call, questions, comments? Alright, seeing none. The motion on the floor is that the Hartford Board of Education authorize the superintendent to execute a contract with Language Line for the term outlined in the contract, ending June 30th, 2025, and an amount not to exceed $105,000. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
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 Ayes? Abstentions? The ayes have it, the motion moves. Thank you, thank you Ms. Hooker, and thank you Language Line for being here tonight. Moving on to item 4.4, Approval Request for Budget Transfer. The motion is that the Hartford Board of Education requests that City Council authorize the fund transfer in the amount of $3,636,177.70 from the non-lapsing fund for the purpose of covering a deficit in the Board of Education Fiscal Year 2024 General Fund Budget. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. I will turn it over to Dr. Torres Rodriguez.
Thank you. Just a quick voiceover and reminder that for the fiscal year 2024, our remaining deficit is 4.99 million, primarily as a result of tuition ending the year over budget, though there were other smaller contributing factors that we reviewed in the Finance Committee. So we will, as planned, withdraw the 1.3 million from the trust to cover retiree healthcare costs. This then will leave a remainder of 6.3.64 million dollars, and so the request is to City Council to withdraw this amount from the non-lapsing fund. And so what remains from the non-lapsing fund will stay there for this current year as we are projecting a deficit as well. So this is a little background on why we're making the request.
Thank you. Are there any questions or discussion around this budget transfer? Mr. Tatum?
Superintendent, could you explain, like, for the public that's trying to track, like, what pots of money exist, what the non-lapsing fund is, and where that money came from?
Yes, so over the years, we have had, whenever we had a surplus, we are not allowed, for lack of a better word, to keep the funds in our account. And so the city had, the city established a separate account where, you know, the money kind of stays there, and then we would then need to make the request officially to City Council for the money to come back, which is why we are taking it, we're bringing it before you all, so that it can be an official request before it can be essentially transferred from a city account to a Board of Ed account.
So this is a fund that has money that was in the school budget that was surplus over the last, do you have an estimate for how long, or over what period of time that for some million dollars accumulated?
It was actually the same amount, 5.4 or 5.7? 5.7? 5.4, around there. But what I do want to mention is that it was replenished by the city during COVID. We did have a much larger surplus, and we, because we're not allowed to keep the funds, right, the city kind of sweeps the funds, if you will, at the end of the year, and they did replenish the account. And so the 5.4 million dollars, we've had the amount in the account for a few years now, I want to say maybe three or four years, but we've not had to dip into it, if you will, because we were leveraging Essar funding.
Thank you.
Any other questions, discussion? Deputy Foster, anything you want to add?
One thing I'll say is just, so you know the amount, by statute, it's, we're capped at saving in the reserve in the non-lapsing fund 2% of our general fund, so our general fund's about 284 million. And so the 5.6, that's the limit. That's all we're allowed to keep if we run a surplus.
Alright, thank you. Final call? Alright, seeing none. The motion on the floor is that the Hartford Board of Education requests the City Council authorize a fund transfer in the amount of $3,636,177.70 from the non-lapsing fund for the purpose of covering a deficit in the Board of Education Fiscal Year 2024 General Fund Budget. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Ayes? Abstentions? Alright, the ayes have it, the motion moves. Item 4.5, Resolution Calling for Full Permanent Funding of Public Schools. Earlier this month, as Ms. Carol Gale noted in her, in her speech, we were provided with a proposed resolution. The Board would like to show support in finding ways for full and permanent funding for public schools. So I will read the resolution in its entirety. Whereas public education is the cornerstone of our democracy, providing fundamental skills and opportunity to nearly 90%, 50 million to children across the United States. And whereas, in the decade following the Great Recession, students across the US lost nearly $600 billion from state disinvestment in their public schools. And whereas, prior to the COVID-19 pandemic, both state and federal funding for public schools failed to meet the critical needs of students across the country. And whereas, the federal government provided nearly $200 billion through three issuance of the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Act, or ESAR, to state and school districts, including $155,376,238 to the Hartford School District. And whereas, the realized impact of Essar funding is that it has benefited students' academic, social, emotional, and mental health needs through targeted and highly effective tutoring programs, after-school and summer school programs, access to technology, expanded meal programs. And whereas, this funding also provided flexible dollars that allowed districts to hire needed teachers and support personnel, lengthen school days, and offer professional development and curriculum training, and make capital improvements. And whereas, research has consistently shown that increased education funding positively affects academic performance, increases graduation rates, and impacts future earnings. And whereas, on average, districts have relied on Essar funding to support roughly 8% of their budgets over the past three years. And whereas, without an infusion of federal public education funding by Congress, it is estimated that districts will have to cut their, sorry, have to cut an average of $1,200 per student from their budget. And whereas, the loss of these funds will be felt drastically, especially in high-poverty school districts that have historically been underfunded, yet continue to serve students with the highest level of need. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Hartford Board of Education as follows. The Hartford Board of Education calls on Congress to immediately pass the Keep Our Pact Act, which would create a 10-year mandatory path to fully fund both Title I and IDEA. And the Hartford Board of Education calls on the state legislature to provide adequate, equitable, and sustainable funding increases to the district to mitigate harm caused by decades of underfunded schools. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Mr. Tatum?
Thank you. I would like to just provide some context, if I may, for this resolution, and a little background on why I think it is meaningful that this board pass the resolution. So obviously, it comes at the end of the Essar funding, which is a pretty unprecedented investment on the part of the federal government into the nation's public schools. And it's, the resolution specifically calls for fully funding IDEA and Title I. Just a little bit of background on that for those who don't know, which included myself until like two weeks ago. The IDEA is the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. It was passed in 1975 initially, which was the first time that the federal government articulated and provided for education for students with disabilities. That education, that legislation was amended in 2004 to authorize the federal government and commit the federal government to fund 40% of the average per pupil expenditure for students with special needs. In the 50 years that the bill has existed, the federal government has not funded more than 18% of that cost. And today, it's about 12 or 13% that the federal government funds for special education expenses. So this act, the Keep Our Pact Act, which is put forward by a senator from Maryland, would create a 10-year plan to have the federal government realize that commitment and fund the IDEA, the 40% that it committed to in 2004. Similar is true for Title I, which is funding that comes from the Elementary and Secondary Education Act that is designed to address systemic inequities and try to equalize educational opportunity. We receive a lot of Title I funding in Hartford, and it is still not what is needed in order to actually, like, fully address the inequities, social inequities that impact the educational experience of our students. So those two things would really make a, really make a difference. And lastly, I'll just say that I think passing a resolution like this, although we spend most of our time, rightly so, focused on internal to Hartford Public Schools issues and the ways in which we have the power to improve things in our system, this is, you know, looking outward at the broader context. And I think I would like to see us step up our efforts at advocacy for some of these political changes that sometimes feel like they're beyond our control, or too big or too complicated for us to influence. But the reality is that these are political decisions that our legislators, our representatives are making, and we can play a part in making sure that investment in education is a priority for them. I think we can all think of lots of other things that have gotten a lot of investment in the last 20 years at the federal government level. And, you know, we're in a presidential cycle now, and education is a non-issue. It's not asked about in debates, it's not talked about on the campaign trail at all. And I think that's a problem, that, that we're facing lots of crises, and education is at the, at the center of them, and yet there's not much conversation about making the investments that we really need. So as educational leaders, I think we can take steps like this to put it on the agenda, both at the federal level, but also at the state level, too. And this, you know, the resolution calls for making that ask of our state representatives, too. So I'm glad to see it be taken up here. I guess lastly, the, I'll say that the, it came to us through a coalition of education advocacy organizations and labor unions. It's also endorsed by Connecticut for All, it's endorsed by, or the legislation, rather, is endorsed by superintendents' associations, and it has broad, broad support from players in the education system.
Thank you. Any other discussion, questions, comments? Mr. Mills?
Just want to point out, sort of similar to Board Member Tatum's remarks, that Connecticut is one of the wealthiest states in the country, while also Connecticut has one of the highest income disparities in the country. While there are 169 municipalities that are fiercely independent, the funding of education that the state does is via property taxes, which is a farcical idea, especially when you consider the fact that Hartford is only 49% taxable. While there are many things that we as a district need to do better at, the reality of our situation is that the state also needs to do better when it comes to equitably providing funding for Connecticut schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions, discussion? Alright, seeing none. The motion on the floor is that the Hartford Board of Education adopt the resolution and call, calls on Congress to immediately pass the Keep Our Pact Act, which would create a 10-year mandatory path to fully fund both Title I and IDEA, and calls on state legislature to provide adequate, equitable, and sustainable funding increases to districts to mitigate the harm caused by decades of underfunded schools. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Ayes? Abstentions? The ayes have it, the motion moves. We now move on to the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are 5.2, First Reading, Title IX and Relevant Policies; 5.3, Acceptance of Funds and Contract Approval for the Family Resource Centers; and 5.4, Approval of the Minutes from the September 17th, 2024 Meeting. Any comments or questions on the consent agenda? Nope, alright. Do I have a motion to vote on the consent agenda?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Ayes? Abstentions? The ayes have it. Thank you all, to my board members, Superintendent, to the public here with us tonight, and the public watching us on television, for joining us on the October 15th Board, Board of Education Regular Meeting, and we are now adjourned. Thank you.